Happy Birthday Al.
Thank you Mayor.
And also want to mention that this Thursday night in Levy Park at 8:45, the movie Back to the Future is going to be shown on the west lawn. It's free and it's sponsored by Midtown Foods and Winona Park and Rec. Should be a lot of fun, so come on down to the Levy Thursday night. And also want to mention a meeting that was held last Friday with some Amtrak officials. The city manager and I and Myron from Community Development met with the two officials from Amtrak that came here to inform us that as of the end of this month, there will no longer be an agent at our Amtrak station. This is not the kind of news we want to hear. We are the second busiest Amtrak station in the state. The only one that'll still have a depot agent will be the one in St. Paul. This seems to be a trend and it's something that they're doing to save money. In response to that, there will be a meeting this week that called with Cliff Black who's a retired Amtrak executive and Bill Spitzer who was the head of the high-speed rail and Eric Brahm was very involved with the local railroading groups. And we're going to see what if anything that we can do. One thing that Amtrak suggested that some communities have done in response to this is to organize a volunteer group, kind of a friends of the depot that may be able to help out and assist. What it means for the public is that the public will not have an agent there to buy tickets. If you want to buy tickets, you're going to have to buy them online. And if you don't have a smartphone, you really aren't going to know where the train is and what time it's going to arrive. So this is kind of a setback, I think, for our community, but one that really out of our control, but one we'll try to have some kind of a response to. And with that, I want to call on Chuck Ripley, the Chair of our Human Rights Commission. He's here tonight to give out some well-deserved awards.
Thank you Mark. Let me first thank the City Council for allowing me to take up the time from the meeting tonight and to recognize the accomplishments of our citizens regarding human rights. We first want to recognize Aubrey Williams, who is the local winner of the League of Minnesota Human Rights Essay Contest for middle school students. Aubrey is going into the seventh grade and her essay addressed how slurs, joking, and bullying intersected with human rights. And Aubrey said she'd be able to read her essay for us.
Almost everyone has been hurt by words of others at least once in their lifetime. People often make jokes or comments without thinking, which can result in others being hurt. Over time, this can gradually get worse. There are individuals who speak out against this and work to prevent hurtful speech. Every day, people with good intentions can hurt others with jokes they mean to be funny. People can take these jokes or figures of speech literally, which makes the joke not a joke anymore. For example, if an American was teaching someone from Asia how to drive, but the student wasn't catching on very quickly, the person from the United States might jokingly have said, "Goodness, you Asians didn't even have a driver's license." The Asian person might have taken this comment very offensively and be truly hurt. The first article of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights states that all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. They are endowed with reason and conscience. In a way, the comment made by the American violates this article saying that Asian people do not have the rights to drive. Even though the comment was made unintentionally, it could lead to worse comments. At this point, the Department of Human Rights takes charge. Just as many jokes and comments are made unintentionally, many are made intentionally. The most common hurtful speech comes from large groups. If more people in a group say mean things, the more courageous others feel to say hurtful things. Besides mean comments, strength in numbers plays a huge role in bullying too. An example of speech that may intentionally hurt another would be something like this. An American says, "Are you Mexicans always so thick-headed? Where's your common sense?" In this statement, Mexican people are not being treated as equal, since the American is implying that the Mexicans aren't as smart as other people in the world. The US Constitution has many references to the fact that all people must be treated fairly and equally, no matter what color, race, religion, gender, or culture they are. When comments like these are made intentionally, individuals and groups can feel inferior and lose confidence in themselves. This is why there are organizations that work to stop these comments, like the Department of Human Rights. Besides organizations in towns and cities, websites are also standing up and speaking out by teaching children about human rights and giving out information to young and old alike. States are beginning to pass anti-bullying laws and teachers, principals, and counselors are speaking out against hurtful speech. In conclusion, many people are hurt by words of others. Sometimes jokes are made based on a group or individual's looks or culture and are either meant to be hurtful or just plain funny. Either way, these jokes shouldn't be made, especially intentional ones. Everyone can work to prevent them, just like websites, teachers, schools, states, organizations, and many other groups. The First Amendment says that all people should have freedom and be treated equal. We should all strive to abide by this on daily basis.
I think everybody can see why Aubrey won the award. That was only written when she was in the sixth grade. And I'm an English professor at Winona State and if my freshmen are half that good this fall, I'm going to be having a good semester. So we next want to honor our two winners of the John Latch Award, Laura Hill and Joe Morse. Their courageous service to our community put us in a real difficult bind this year and we were equally divided about who was most deserving of the award, so we decided this year to break from precedence and give it to both of them. Laura Hill is a special education teacher at Winona Senior High. She was among the top ten finalists for Teacher of the Year. She is the coordinator of Fortitude, a student group dedicated to challenging racism and other forms of discrimination. Laura is a passionate advocate for her students and their families, and together they have worked to educate the community and foster real conversation. Unlike some people, Laura is not only against racism and other forms of discrimination, she's actively anti-racist and anti-discrimination. And what that means is she recognizes that the neutral position, and I think Aubrey was getting at this in her essay, the neutral position we too often find ourselves in is toward racism, sexism, homophobia, and other forms of discrimination. And what Laura is able to do in her work is really recognize that we have to be proactive in recognizing all of our students as belonging to our community and being worthy of the assistance we give them. Our other winner, Joe Morse, sets an imposing standard for all of us and his accomplishments are almost too many to mention. As a young man, he was active in the Civil Rights Movement, working with the Congress of Racial Equality. After three civil rights workers were killed in Philadelphia, Mississippi, Joe volunteered to replace them, living under constant threat of violence for several years. In Winona, Joe helped to create Winona Unified, a group that reacted to hate crimes committed in Winona in 2007. Joe has also been a dedicated proponent of women's rights, particularly concerning domestic abuse. Through his organization Tough Guys, he works with men to turn them from a path of violence and anger. He has also worked to reform governmental policies and give women more protections and rights. Finally and fittingly for a winner of the John Latch Award, Joe has been a tireless steward of the environment. Joe recognizes how clean water and clean air and a stable climate are necessary for each and every one of us. And so it's my honor to present both Joe and Laura the John Latch Award for 2015. Would you?
Happy Birthday.
How many years is that? Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. And they wanted to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you for honoring Joe and I with the John Latch Human Rights Award. You all know the story. John Latch recognized a problem and he set out to solve it. John Latch walked the walk, walked the talk, my excuse, my apologies. His work was good work, but what really made a difference was when John's community shared in the same vision and stepped up and lobbied Congress to enact the Federal Fish and Wildlife Refuge Act and ensured future generations the gift of public access. Together, we create change for future generations. We still have work to do. While our country has made strides, our children suffer in Winona. Fortitude and I have witnessed graffiti with Lynch scenes and their words, "Kill all ends" in the school hall. We've seen Confederate flags on students' vehicles. Black students are yelled at by people in cars and from homes, called ends, on their way from, this year from a funeral. Students of color threatened with arrest while in school for trivial things. Students who have names like Jamal and Shaniqua can't get jobs, are followed in stores and feel targeted by police. Gay, lesbian, and transgender children suffer similarly. This is in Winona. A recent poll showed that white people believe that these issues do occur, but not in their towns. Let me assure you, Winona is like every town in these United States, full of good people who struggle to understand each other and want better. In order to make progress, we must recognize the problem exists here. We need to listen without becoming defensive, without making tired excuses, then educate ourselves and take action. If you want to be educated on issues facing our youth, Fortitude has a full year of events planned, including our annual play, which they write. You will have a Winona Conversations Part Two in the spring, so please stay tuned in to them. I want to thank the Human Rights Commission, the YMCA, the Winona Historical Society, Winona State University, and St. Mary's University, and the Midwest Music Festival for working with Fortitude this summer to create a more equitable Winona. I want to thank you as well, who are listening. Thank you to the Winona Daily News and the Winona Post for their commitment to issues of equity. Thank you. I'm looking forward to a year of equity.
Kind of a hard act to follow. Laura's really on the cutting edge of doing human rights work at the school and I just really appreciate all her work, working with kids in Fortitude and the kids that are kind of on the margins of our community. I just, I really want to appreciate Human Rights Commission for this award. And I want to also thank the mayor and the city council for, for having a Human Rights Commission, for having a commission that people can go to when they have difficulties, when they feel like that they've experienced discrimination. And I, you know, appreciate that not all communities, you know, have a Human Rights Commission to deal with, with human rights. So that's, that's an important thing that Winona has. And I accept this award not just for myself, but the work that I've done has always been with many other people cooperating together to make social change. It's kind of something that I've learned is that we don't do a whole lot individually. We can do a lot if we work together with other people. So Laura identified some of the problems that the students experience and eight years ago, you know, Dr. Ripley mentioned that some of us started Winona Unified. I got this little pin here, it says, "Creating an inclusive community." But we started that organization because there had been some flyers left on the East End home of a multiracial family, very derogatory comments telling them to leave town. And people came together and said, "That's not what Winona is like. That's not what we want Winona to be like," and formed this organization. We have forums throughout the community in the East End, the West End, in Goodview, to talk about how people can understand each other better and how we can make Winona a welcoming community for everyone, whether they're, you know, people African-American, Asian-American, Latino, or Polish. We had a panel with a Polish person who took, said he took her three generations and a hundred years to feel like she was part of Winona. So that was a big effort. And I just want to mention some of the vision we had at that time, which I think was so important. Winona should be a place where each individual's culture, dignity, and self-respect are strengthened by the respect and civility of our neighbors. Winona should be a place where people feel safe in their homes, on the streets, in our neighborhood schools, and places of work. And Winona should be a place where each of us can find happiness and prosperity that flows from an inclusive community. And then we have our mission statement and I'm just going to ask you all to take one of these and pass them around. And I think you've got one. Maybe you can take George's and pass it around to the council members. I think it's just important that you have that and think about the work that people in this community did. We haven't met for several years, but we think that still holds true a lot of the vision and the mission of that, of that statement. So as Laura mentioned, Winona continues to have problems for people of color, being followed around, being higher suspensions from our schools of kids of color than white kids, which is standard for many communities around the country. Not feeling welcome in clubs, which is what we learned when we had these forums from people of color talking about what it's like to live in Winona. Sometimes with Latino folks paid less or not paid at all for the work that they do. And difficult sometimes for people to come forward even to the Human Rights Commission and talk about it because they're afraid of how it would affect their status and their job and in their community. So as a person that's done social justice work for about fifty years now, I just want to make a few comments about, you know, what I think is important if we want to continue to make change. Because I view social change as important because things always change. We don't stay the same. Things either go forward and make it a better community for us, or we go backward, we slide backward. So it's important that we all work together to make it a better community. I've found that it's important to stand together with people who have less power, people of color who have less power in our community, to stand with them and stand beside them and listen, understand the problems that they have, and then support them to help deal with those problems and, and challenge what's, where it's needed to be challenged. For kids in school, for battered women, for rape victims, for immigrant workers who have difficulty dealing with law enforcement and dealing with other regulatory standards. And we have to listen to them and then we have to believe what they say and then move forward to say what can we do to, to protect them and also to stand behind them. And then finally, I guess I'd just speak about my work as a, as a person that loves the earth and the air and the water and the, and the, and the land. And, you know, we have a big problem and we need to think about what we're going to do in Winona to make sure that we continue to protect our land and our, our air and our water. It won't happen unless we step forward and work together on it in a big way. Because there are people who would, who would for their own personal benefit diminish our land and our earth. And we have to work to make sure that that does not happen. Thank you.
So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your work. City Manager?
Just one item I will put together for the council's purposes. A schedule of pre-council meeting since we have a number of issues coming up, so that you know when it's going to come up and can inform others. So I'll get that together for the next meeting.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, it's a request by Audio Designs to hold the annual crank it up car audio competition on Saturday, August 22nd. Move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2 is a request to close Chadfield Street for a car show on August 29th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Jerry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will vote. Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3 is a request by Paperback and Pieces for a street closure on October 3rd. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will vote. Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.4 is a homecoming parade request by Winona State for Saturday, September 26th. And Joe is here if you have questions. I'm going to approve.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Joe, you didn't want to say anything? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will vote. Same sign. Got your parade.
Item 3.5 is a Winona Senior High homecoming parade for Friday, October 2nd. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Al?
Just my annual comment that those residents along Lee Street hopefully know by now there's an event going on, but just so they would be informed by this committee that there will be a street closure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Will vote. Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request to change the parking on Franklin Street north of the railroad from fifteen minutes to two hours. I move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will vote. Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request for four-way stop sign at Second and Johnson.
I'll move. Motion by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Pam.
Got a question. Is it possible to set it up on a timeframe to come back and review it after the construction's over, like in three years? So it doesn't become perpetual? Because it may be after the bridge is built and the construction changes, we want to just take another look at it?
Well, we always have the right, I think, to do that. But, you know, I was, I think it was twenty-five years ago, there was a downtown parking study and I was on that committee and they made a number of recommendations and I think, I think only two were actually adopted. And one of them was the Second Street four-way stop changed to a two-way stop. I use this almost every day and with the changes down there with the Blue Heron and the Boathouse and the Co-op and just all the bookstore and all that activity and the difficulty of trying to make a left-hand turn there, I think a four-way stop makes sense. And I think it will be a good thing if we do approve it.
Al?
I want to speak against this, not necessarily against the action, but I think when we make traffic changes, I think we should have more empirical evidence as opposed to the fact that because we travel through it, we note that there's been a lot of difficulty. I think the reason to adjust traffic in one case would be because of the number of accidents that have occurred at a particular location, one of the reasons anyway. And I don't see in the agenda item anything specifically, are there more accidents here that are happening because of the bridge? Are there fewer accidents that happened before the bridge construction began? I agree that there's quite a few intersection or quite a few vehicles using that road, but there's also a gap in traffic because vehicles have to stop at Main Street and at Huff Street and also at Lafayette Street. So the flow of traffic along Second Street isn't continuous. It is stop and go, which gives gaps in the traffic flow for vehicles to turn left onto Second Street from, from Johnson Street. And, and I think there might be a better alternative to creating better sightlines for vehicles trying to turn left onto Johnson Street, and that would be to somehow restrict parking back from each of the intersections on Second Street so vehicles approaching from Johnson can have a better way of seeing the oncoming traffic. Or restricting those particular spaces that are there now to smaller vehicles rather than large vehicles such as trucks or SUVs. I don't know how you do that if it's by ordinance, I'm sure it's a fairly difficult thing to do, but they do it in parking garages where, you know, space is limited and only compact cars can, can park there. So I, I think our action might be a little premature in my sense, because I don't have enough information, therefore I'm going to vote against the motion in this case.
Well, it doesn't address the pedestrian concern, so at that intersection, but Michelle?
Judy or Brian, what, what, I mean, other than I know we had one, one person comment on the increase of traffic there, was there some indication that that desired a stop sign?
I've heard it over the years that there have been interested. I remember the stop sign being there, kind of things myself, but, um, frequently stopped there sometimes too. It is more pedestrian action. The Co-op, the Blue Heron, the Boathouse, Sammies, all that pedestrian activity that goes on there, there's about seventy-seven hundred cars a day on Second Street. And the gap, and no, I mean to argue with Al, but the gap on stop with the current on the left-hand turn at Main Street, there is not much of a gap there. They kind of build this up again because Main Street tends to do a lot of left-hand turns, so you don't get the gap that they give you.
I haven't noticed the pedestrian issue because I cross there quite frequently. Cars always stop for me, but I will agree with Al that the sightlines are not good for the left-hand turn. It's that turn coming off of Johnson, you know, trying to...
Trying to get onto Second Street.
Right. That, that I think is the dangerous, not for the pedestrians, but for the person turning left because you can't see the cars coming. So I would agree with him that the, on some of the streets, we've, we've painted yellow back further so they can't park so close to the edge, so you have a little bit better sightline. I mean, I, I would think that would be, at least for the cars, that would be helpful.
I travel that intersection probably four to five times a day and I can tell you that it is a bear to get out onto Second Street, particularly with Fourth and Third shut off the traffic, so everything is diverted to Second. And, and it, if you're coming off of Johnson, I don't care which direction you're headed, it's almost bumper to bumper coming up Second Street.
Well, even before the bridge created, additional problems it was an issue as far as I'm concerned.
I just wanted to comment that I've heard, I've heard, there's been a lot of talk about pedestrian and vehicular safety lately. And two different people have commented that they think that a lot of our problems could be ameliorated if we pulled the sightlines or pulled the parking back from a lot of our intersections, including, including Broadway. So is there, is there a routine way to take a look at sightlines and traffic in the city? I would be in favor of taking a look at that. That's just a, that is a, that is a request that we turn to this issue of sightlines, not necessarily as it relates to Johnson and Second.
Al?
This is an introduction, my understanding, to an ordinance, correct? And so we have some time between now and our next second reading of the ordinance. I'd still like to see some statistics on accidents at the intersection and, and the severity thereof over, say, the last five years, which would cover before and after. Would help me make up my mind anyway. Thank you.
Other discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six-one passes.
Item 3.8 is the City of Winona Ash Tree Management Status.
This is an update that was given to us in the council's request. It doesn't require any action. If anybody, any staff is here to say anything about this, we'll just move on, I guess.
Well, I was the one who brought it forward, made the request. I appreciate that it's, that it was brought back so quickly, since the only thing that I would like to bring up is two things. The Emerald Ash Bore is within the City of Winona. However, the, that's the bad news. The good news is, is the overall spread of the Emerald Ash Bore is not up to what they had assumed. So it's, the spread is slower than expected, however, it is in fact in Winona, and I believe the count is about a dozen. Trees, Judy, wasn't that it approximately? That they know of, which means there are more, but about twelve identified, I believe, is what we've heard from staff and from the people that are out there. So of all of this information, this page and a half of excellent information, that's probably the main thing that we would like out. Yes, it is here, but the overall spread through the region is not up to the worst-case scenario that we were planning for.
Al?
Just a comment, it's an excellent report, as Councilman Craig indicated, and I, I would assume it's on our website as well for, for those who would like to, to read that information, because it's good information. that information, because it's good information. Thank you.
And then under New Business, item 5.1, is to set the date for the public hearing to consider resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges. That public hearing would be on September 21st, and distributed this evening was an updated list of those, uh, un- that are remaining unpaid.
Move to approve the, set the hearing date.
I second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam, discussion? All those in favor? Oh, George?
Yeah, just one comment, just, uh, you know, for the public, because a lot of this is public record as well, too, is that, uh, we are setting a hearing date for $216,000 of unpaid water and sewer bills. So that is a lot of money. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.2 is the Levy Park Expenditures.
Chad, did you want to address that?
Uh, Mayor and Council, tonight we're bringing in a request to purchase, um, what we're defining as movable seating or patio furniture for Levy Park, specifically for the Levy Park patio. Um, if you remember back in April, when staff, along with the Levy Park Committee, brought overall recommendations for Levy Park, uh, staff noted that we could bring back, um, items within Levy Park that did not have a specific dollar amount allocated to them. So in April, uh, the council did approve, uh, design work to be done at, uh, Main Street for the pedestrian crossing, certainly you approved, uh, repair to the Levy Park patio, uh, utility upgrades and docking upgrades. At that time in April, we had said there was approximately $50,000 left of the $100,000 allocated, and again, staff would bring those forward on, as need basis, and that's why you see the request before you tonight for the movable seating patio furniture.
Questions for Chad? George?
Uh, what are we talking, utility upgrades?
Um, utility upgrades, um, a portion of those have been completed. We did, um, add, um, ampage, wattage down to the Levy Park patio area to accommodate more events in that area. We were running cores and generators for some of the larger events, and so those upgrades have taken place. Um, we added some utility upgrades to the docking facility on the East End, um, to assist the tour boat, um, and that's really the, the bulk of the utility upgrades that have been done in Levy Park.
Okay. Now, uh, the next, uh, five bullet points, you were talking about the $10,000 for movable seating, uh, any idea what we're talking about price-wise for signage and, uh, the shade structures, the improved walkways, events promotions?
Um, George, I do not. Um, again, we'll bring those forward as they come up. Um, we, we allocated or estimated about $10,000 for each of those items.
Okay.
Um, signage specifically will come forward in the design of Main Street, that was a request to have better signage in that area, as well as overall signage in the park. Temporary shade structures, again, each of those items is, is estimated approximately $10,000, and that's why each time with those items, we'd come back with staff. So I don't have a real solid number on those, but again, staff would bring those forward each time if, before a purchase was made.
Now, there's been, uh, some newspaper articles about picnic tables, more picnic tables along the East End of Levy, uh, portable restrooms, what's our, what's our position on that right now?
Yep, um, we've gotten several requests about having more bathroom facilities within Levy Park. Um, I'll work with, uh, Parks Unit Lieutenant Larry Tullius this week on getting, uh, an additional porta potty in Levy Park. We do have a porta potty at the foot of Main, and of course, there are restroom facilities attached to the Boathouse Cafe. Those have limited hours based on the restaurant. Our idea would be to move a, a portable bathroom, um, in really the center of Levy Park, either around that Catch Basin or into the east side of the park in the parking lot. Uh, my concern is that we find a location, obviously that is flat, but is also well-lit. Uh, porta potties tend to be a target for vandalism, we want to make sure that it's in a location that again is where the porta potty could be secured and, and well-lit. So we will add at least one additional, uh, for the time being. Certainly the longer-range plans of Levy Park and the committee have talked about additional restroom facilities, uh, in Levy Park, certainly as activity grows, we're going to need, um, additional restrooms, so we'll look at that as well.
And what about the picnic tables?
And the picnic, what, what you're approving tonight is really movable seating, could be defined as patio furniture, and so it'll include, uh, seating for picnics, um, the pieces that we are looking at would also include an umbrella for some temporary shade, um, and we will look at both locations, meaning the Levy Park patio and that east, Easterly patio, that's more of like a half-circle, we'll look at putting some tables there as well.
And have any donations been received for the park yet, or any, uh, any plan for seeking donations for the park?
We haven't, to this day, we haven't received any don- specific donation for the park, but that certainly is in our short-term plan. Um, obviously, you heard the committee, you've heard staff present to council this mixed funding approach. We know that dollars have been allocated, you know, specifically this year, you heard tonight during the CIP meeting that we're proposing additional dollars, uh, in 2016. Certainly, I think it can be said that dollars allocated from underneath the bridge, uh, in 2016 certainly shows that commitment from the city, um, but I think it's time for us now to take a, a closer look at fundraising and using that mixed funding approach of both public dollar and private dollars.
Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation.
I second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam, discussion?
Al? Just to comment, I'll support this motion. I was down, um, last Monday with the America Queen Steamboat, and I thought the artisans and vendors, the way their booths were placed, especially around that former Wilkie area, went rather well, and I, I think the city did a good job in the concrete and also the grass area as well. Just I'll support the motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.3 is the Bud King Ice Arena Professional Engineering Services Amendment.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle, discussion? Hearing none, will vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.4 is the Bud King Ice Arena Donation. Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, I think I heard Jerry say, "Second." Any discussion? Very generous donation, it's kind of fun to accept, um, $1.8 million. Will vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with George.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this afternoon, about one o'clock, demolition began on the Sobieski Park Building down on E-7 Street, across the street from Gabriel Park, and, uh, I think the, uh, back operator had a pretty good audience there, uh, watching this afternoon, and some, "Why, why not this? And you shouldn't need do that," and, uh, we had a few operators there, but, uh, most of the building should be all down, I presume, by now or tomorrow, but, uh, that project is now underway. And I'd just like to, uh, thank the engineering department, I was with our engineer last week looking at some things and, uh, for his time, and, uh, we've took care of some situations that we had out there, so. And I'd just like to just offer condolences, uh, to a couple of families. First of all, to the Majewski family on the passing of, uh, Mother Evelyn, uh, Evelyn who, uh, lived very many, many years, ninety-six, I believe, and she was the wife of Mark Majewski, owner and operator of Winona Plumbing, that had did a lot of work around the city of Winona. So to her son Jerry, and to her daughter Judy, and to their families, uh, condolences on the passing of this wife, mother, and grandmother. And also to the family of Bev Sharmak, Bev who passed away last Friday. She was involved with, uh, the operation of Taps Plumbing Services with her husband, and, uh, very good woman, good sense of humor. And to her husband Henry, to her sons Glenn, Shane, and Travis, and their families, uh, condolences on the passing of this very, very wonderful and, uh, interesting lady to talk to, always a good sense of humor. And she also is the mother-in-law of police investigator Ann Sharmak, so condolences to both those families. Thank you.
Pam?
Uh, I don't have a council concern, but I have a question. When will the Franklin Street reconstruction be done? The, the tracks, the over, over the tracks and the rest of the, the...
They, they, they were shaping it today, hopefully they may, this weekend, should work like that.
Really? Oh, good answer.
We're waiting on that.
Pam, if you would have asked two months ago, it would have gone like that.
Next time.
Anything else? Paul?
My only concern is an article in the paper the other day with regard to a meeting that we are to have yet with the school board, and there was, uh, the implications in the article that some decisions and assumptions had been made on behalf of the council rather than one of the commissions. And, uh, in reading the article, the commission that had made some assumptions, council has not talked about it, and, um, it, it could mislead some people as to the direction that that may, meeting might go.
Okay. Michelle?
I have no concerns at this time.
No concerns?
Just at this very moment, I'm okay.
Jerry, pass. Al?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for the birthday wishes, appreciate that. Um, and I want to send my congratulations to, uh, the Winona Municipal Band, um, on the conclusion of their centennial season at Lake Park Band Shell. The band members, Director Levi Lundak, uh, the committee that put everything together, uh, I think they did an outstanding concert series for the summer at the Lake Park Band Shell. We have a terrific organization in that municipal band, and I look forward to, uh, those Wednesday night concerts next year. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there's one item, approval of the minutes from August 3rd.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Al and, and Michelle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Mayor, I move for your adjourn.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Or adjourn.